All right, we'll go ahead and start today's meeting. It's Tuesday, November 9th at 9:30. Erica, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odericio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
All right, if we could go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Okay, second, great. All right, next on our agenda is awards and presentations. Good morning. As we recognize Veterans Day later this week, we'd like to start by honoring our veterans in Adams County and across the nation who have bravely and selfishly served our country. The dedication of these individuals to keep our nation safe and protect our liberties should never be forgotten. Adams County has more than 28,000 veterans we'd like to recognize today. Many of these individuals not only served in the armed forces, but they continue to serve in our community, some through our Veterans Advisory Commission. Adams County Veterans Advisory Commission was established to gather veterans from within the county to address and work cooperatively with other county boards, councils, and staff with regards to policy programs and concerns to relating veterans' interests and develop new working relationships with all other agencies serving veterans within the county. Thank you to those serving on this commission for continuing to give back to our community and helping assure our veterans have the resources they need. In addition, we'd like to thank the members of the commission for their work on the new Adams County Veterans Memorial, which will be located at the Riverdale Regional Park. The new memorial is scheduled for completion in late 2022 and will be a life-size model of the USS Colorado battleship with the bow jutting into the lake and the current trail passing through the site. Chances are, we all know someone who served. We encourage you to reach out Thursday and thank them for their services. Commissioners, do you have any comments? All right, I don't see any comments. I myself, my son, served for 15 years for Iraqi freedom and ended up 90% disabled. So I understand the sacrifices individual people did. He actually missed the birth of his son because he was serving. And I appreciate all of the veterans that are here in the audience and all that are listening today, the sacrifices that you make, and I also appreciate their families who supported him. So, thank you. In addition to honoring our veterans, we're celebrating, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Odericio.
That's all right. I just wanted to echo that. We as Adams County, I know that this Board of County Commissioners support our veterans, and there have been various ways that we've done that, through our VSO, our Veteran Services Office, through our memorials, through our Human Services, but most of all, through our honor and our appreciation. So, do we have veterans in here we want to see stand up, maybe? Could we see the veterans, people who've served in the armed forces, please stand? Do we have a group? Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You know, a lot of times you've heard me talk about my support for the uniformed folks that protect us domestically, but I also think that we always, always need to talk about those folks who wear uniform to protect us abroad. So, thank you all very much, and thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pinter.
We always try to balance piling on with adding new comments, and so I'll keep my comments short because I just echo what Commissioner Henry was able to share and what Commissioner Odericio was able to share, and I know is shared by all of us here on the commission thanking our veterans. We have so many of them in Adams County, and we are lucky to have you, and thank you for your service.
All right. In addition to honoring our veterans, we're celebrating National Adoption Month, specifically National Adoption Day in Adams County, which is Friday, November 19th. Since January 2021, Adams County has finalized 92 adoptions, and nine more will be finalized on a National Adoption Day. I'd also like to take a brief moment to recognize the county employees who work hard every day to find loving homes for their children in our community. Our dedicated human service employees and Children and Family Services and the Permanency Service Program ensure our children in need are placed in permanent loving homes where they will have the chance to thrive and experience love and support. Thank you for making a positive impact in our community. We'd also like to acknowledge our partners at the 17th District Judicial Court for their support of the county's adoption services. We could not do this without your partnership. Now, we'll read the official National Adoption Day proclamation. Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you. I am honored to read this proclamation. What a lot of folks may not know is my mother was adopted and came into her family after her parents, who became my grandparents, were seeking to have a child. And so this ability to have adoptions and have families find children and have children find homes deeply touches my community and my family as well. So I'm honored to be able to read this proclamation that's on for National Adoption Day, November 19th, 2021. Whereas each month, an average of 27 abused and neglected children in the care of Adams County Human Services are waiting for a loving, nurturing, and permanent home. And whereas these children are not the newborns most people picture when they think of adoption, generally, they are older boys and girls, teenagers, who may have unique medical, psychological, or physical needs. And whereas nearly all of these children have special needs because they must be placed as a sibling group, because of mental, physical, or emotional disabilities, because they are minorities, or because they are school-aged, and whereas these children need extra patience and support to help them overcome previous hardships. And whereas, as a result of the partnership between Adams County and the 17th Judicial District, Adams County anticipates finalizing 140 adoptions in 2021. And whereas, there are families able and willing to adopt children who have special needs and circumstances, and whereas it is important to stress that a disability, low income, or unmarried status does not preclude the right to adopt. And whereas, children waiting for adoptive parents and families who have adopted these children require and deserve community and public agency support. And whereas, the local courts of Adams County will open their doors on National Adoption Day, Friday, November 19th, to finalize the adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, State of Colorado, proclaims November 19th, 2021, as National Adoption Day and recognizes the entire month of November 2021 as National Adoption Month in Adams County, and urges all residents to join the national effort to raise awareness about the importance of adoption. Signed by all of us.
Commissioners, do we have any comments? Do we have anyone in the audience from our Human Service Department? Why don't you come forward? I just kind of had a feeling that you guys were out there.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I have to say that it is such a pleasure to be able to do that in this in-person this year, along with celebrating our forever families. As we all know, it was virtual last year, so it just brings much joy to myself and to my teams and to the families who will be part of National Adoption Day to be able to show our love and gratitude to them in person. So just taking us back a year, just to show and explain the work and diligent passion of these teams. In March of 2020, we know that we all shut down because of COVID. And so I just want to let you all know that between March of 2020 and May of 2021, when we were closed and had limited capacity to the building and to our work, the adoption teams diligently partnered with our families, with our court, with the community to make finalizations occur, and during that timeframe, we finalized 136 children and two their forever families. So I think that's really important to note of all the work and dedication of the staff. And again, Friday, November 19th, is our National Adoption Celebration out at the Justice Center, and we will be adopting 10 children into nine forever families. And again, it's going to be such a great celebration being able to do it in person this year. So on behalf of myself, and it's absolutely such an honor for me to be part of such an adoption team, if I can have you all stand, just in recognition of their work, passion, and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, do you have any comments? All right, I don't see any comments, other than we appreciate you all, the work you do. So, thank you so much. Okay, we'll go on to our regular schedule, on to public comment. Erica, who do you have?
We do have six people signed up today. The first person is Mark Bromley.
Mark?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Mark Bromley. Here to discuss a matter of great concern. I represent a large percent of the residents of Adams County, HD34 Northland, and we refuse to be silent. My 45% representation demands to be respected and fairly treated with courtesy by partisan politics. This is in reference to the poor treatment one woman received on November 2nd by this board on the matter of mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and forced compliance testing for those not wanting to vaccinate whom are good employees and under threat of wrongful termination on the issue of freedom of choice. The Adams County Board is being tyrannical in medical screening mandates, which are being imposed as a means to cull and wrongfully terminate government employment and statewide employment of conservatives and Republican employees. Forcing despicable vaccination mandates is a hate crime being committed by Democrats in office, simply targeting people like me who believe in our natural, God-given rights to our own sovereignty of our healthcare needs. Mandating masks is foolish. Mandating worthless vaccines is stupid. And imposing testing for those unvaccinated to keep their jobs is, simply put, discrimination in workplaces nationwide. I will not comply. The people I represent will not comply. I left the U.S. Navy as a leader who was advancing one rank per year of service. I was on the path of becoming a chief. I was also being screened to become a Maverick Officer. I left because Clinton's anthrax mandated vaccination order and to keep my honor instead of put up with stupid and ignorant partisan threats to my employment with the U.S. Navy. I then worked for Homeland Security and found myself surrounded by Democrats that hated me for being, in their words, George W. Bush. I know well how it is to be wrongfully terminated because of the willful abuse and neglect and disrespect of veterans by Democrat politics and partisan control. Then I learned it in civilian employment by the Obama-Biden regimes and hate crimes constantly committed against Republicans and conservatives in Democrat-controlled jobs. My lawful U.S. family was separated by government abuse of employment in the USA. The ACLU fights for illegal aliens, trying to give them $450,000 for their separations. Yet I do not see Democrats respecting U.S. citizens' families. They have harmed and the hardships your agenda has inflicted on U.S. citizens, which is only apparently worth $1,500 in damages. I see the mandates and the testing as a means to wrongfully terminate Republicans from employment. I had COVID and naturally healed, and now I'm immune to a biological attack aimed at me by Democrats who claim they had COVID. I actually got COVID from a fully vaccinated person. Found out the illness was no worse than the chickenpox, mumps, and the shingles, which I had to naturally recover from in my lifetime here in Adams County and the U.S. Navy. I simply ask that you have more consideration to not wrongfully terminate people in Colorado and harm their families by these pathetic and irresponsible mandates and testing that is not needed to respect our freedoms and rights to our own medical freedom and privacy. Thank you very much. And I guess they have L.A. protests over some extreme mandates that are actually going on in California at this time, and also there's plenty of YouTube videos down in Australia. You can see exactly what this kind of mandates can become, and it could turn into a tyranny, and that's all. I just want to address the council.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Erica.
Tom Green and Reba Droter.
Tom and Reba. It's good to see you, Reba. I haven't seen you in a while. Yes, it has.
So I'm Reba Droter, and we have...
Maria Carbal.
And I'm Tom Green.
And we're from the Commerce City Business and Professional Association, of which the Adams County has, until last year, when the world blew up, were 44-year partners with us. And so we have something that's a little late, but we have a reason that it was a little late. Last January, we got you an award. You were, you were one of our award winners of the Business and Professional Association, and we were going to present this award to you in February with a cake and with everything. But we were, we had the award, but we could not be here.
Cake with that.
So we're here to present this award. It's a real pretty one. And it says Commerce City Business and Professional Association, presented to the Adams County Commissioners and Government in grateful appreciation for 44 years of consistent commitment to the Commerce City Business and Professional Association and the Commerce City community. Without your help, things like Winterfest and Trick or Treat Street cannot happen. It cannot happen. And so we just had, we got permission at the last second to do Trick or Treat Street, and we had four to five times the children and families that we ever had. And we're getting ready to do Winterfest on December 4th, and we're doing this all within protocols. But we can't let it drop because if we do, for instance, Winterfest has been going on in one way or another since I was in third grade, and look how old I am. This is a long time, and it can't go away because it's the only thing that brings the entire city together. So I'd like to present this award to you, and Tom has, Tom has our plea.
Yeah, just continued support. We're going to have a request again. We ran out of candy four times at Trick or Treat Street, so that just shows you the appeal that's out there for the city. People want to go out to these events, and as long as you provide the safe protocols and everything else, they can be done. And so we really appreciate your support. I have copies of our financial requests that I'll give to Ray and...
It's Ray, yeah.
One for everybody else, but we really appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
And why don't we come down and accept the award? Commissioners, okay with that?
Oh, thank you. While you're coming down, I just want to thank you for recognizing the veterans. My whole family suffers. My husband's 100% disabled. And for all my family members that have been adopted, we are so grateful.
All right, Erica, who else do you have signed up?
Paulina Romano.
And Pauline?
Good morning. I am a parent to two school-aged children in the 27J School District here in Adams County. As you know, the election was last week, and our school district had two issues on the ballot, 5A and 5B. 5A was intended to help raise the wages for the teachers and staff who are in our school district. Unfortunately, this did not pass, which means for the seventh time since this increase has been proposed, teachers and staff do not see a raise in their paychecks or resources. I am a bit baffled as to why the government cannot allocate more money for teachers. However, every time I go to the school as a parent, a member of the PTO, to volunteer or to pick up my children, there are boxes and boxes of masks being delivered by the state of Colorado. Where is this money coming from? How are we continuing to pour money into a virus that has a 99% survival rate, yet we cannot pay our teachers and our staff members who are inside these buildings? Every single day when I am at my children's school, I see three to four masks on the ground. Not only are we wasting money and resources on these masks that have not proven to stop the spread of COVID, we are adding to the amount of pollution that is already plaguing this earth. Did you know that disposable masks generate 7,200 tons of medical waste per day? Per day. We can say that this is about the children. We can say that this is about health. What about the health of the earth that we are leaving these children? What kind of world are we leaving them when we are adding 7,200 tons of medical waste per day? It's time to end the mask mandates and give our children a clean and healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, who's next?
Randy Brodessen.
Randy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Brodessen here on behalf of North Metro Community Services. Missed you all last year like everybody else, but glad to be back here this year. You have on your agenda a couple of items, actually, that affect us, one directly, a contract amendment to give us some additional funding to help us make the transition to the new world of services. We are converting our vans to smaller operations where we can take only, you know, four or five people out in the community instead of 10 or 12, which has got some real benefits for people when it comes to integrating them into the community. We're also bringing some folks back into our main building because of the advent of remote work, and this contract amendment would help us fund both of those projects. You're also, I see the budget is on this year, and we have been a longtime part of that, and I really want to thank you for your ongoing support. It's critical. It's critical to our operations and providing the services that we provide to people with intellectual developmental disabilities and their families in Adams County. So, thank you so much for your support. Hope you can see your way clear to continuing to support us today, and thanks again.
Thank you, and we missed you last year.
Thanks.
Sure. Erica, who else do you have signed up?
The South Adams County Fire Department.
So as our deputy says, the second responders. But that's the deputies. We feel that you're first responders, but come on down. Yeah, we know how those deputies are.
I told them we were here to give him an award, and he wouldn't accept it, so...
You know, I have to say, the only time there was a fire in my house, it was put out by a police officer. I'm just...
I'm sure it rekindled, though, several times. Well, good evening, Commissioner. Good morning, Commissioners. Wow, I've had a late night, obviously. Just want to talk a little bit about the CARES Act. I have quite a few folks behind me, my two deputy chiefs, division chief, our fire marshal, some firefighters, and our accreditation manager are all behind me. And the CARES Act that the county let us receive from the CARES Act funds, I just kind of want to give a little display on what this is. A lot of times, money goes out, but you never really get to see the product, and it's kind of cool show and tell for the audience as well. We received a total of $164,237 from Adams County. We purchased seven Lucas devices, which we'll talk about here in a minute, thermal temperature cameras, PPE consisting of N95s, gowns, sanitizing wipes, and so on and so forth during the COVID-19 pandemic. But more or less, these Lucas's devices are all about CPR. CPR is definitely a grim thing on a scene, but obviously, it's one of the more frequent calls that we use. but obviously, it's one of the more frequent calls that we run on. National cardiac arrests have increased since the pandemic, and we have experienced an increase of over 150%. From the pre-pandemic numbers, we had an average of 4.8 cardiac arrests per month, and in 2021, we are averaging 7.12. So these Lucas devices provide a high-quality guideline with chest compressions during a sudden cardiac arrest with minimal interruptions. The Lucas device is designed to improve CPR quality by prioritizing first responder and patient safety. Ability to maintain distance from suspected and confirmed COVID-19 patients reduces the number of first responders needed to administer chest compressions during code compared to rotation of first responders providing CPR. The Lucas device, and we're gonna display this, is a device that you put on a patient for CPR, and it does the chest compressions. And although we don't have national data out there yet, because they are pretty new, but they are definitely, you'll see probably in the very near future, statistics showing how these can save lives. Now, human, right, we're all subjected to error. As we do CPR, it's very exhausting. It's very tiring. And it's, like I said, it's grim. It's not a pretty sight. So with these Lucas devices, they are very consistent in getting chest compressions and getting people to the hospital. So with that said, I would like to do a little bit of a demonstration with the Lucas device, and with the CARES money, we did get some thermal imaging cameras. Thermal imaging cameras let us see in smoke. So we purchased these new thermal imaging cameras, so we'll do a little bit of the display as we go out in the audience. We could even pass it around for everybody out here to see, you know, what it looks like to look through a thermal imaging camera. So with that said, if we could get firefighter Saroni and firefighter Osmus up here to display what a Lucas device does. Yeah. I don't know if we could do it somewhere that everybody can see, but. Well, that may not feel too well. And go ahead and display a little bit as you're going through.
Can I talk a little bit about what this device does? This is our backboard strap. This will be placed underneath the patient. Back like so. And then this is gonna be exactly Lucas device itself. So we have the control module at the top, so we can either cycle between continuous compressions or cycle between 30 and 2. So if we use supply, breaths, ventilations for the CPR progress. So how this will work is we will place it underneath the patient, underneath their back, and then the claw hooks will clip in. Obviously, this will be placed on the patient. We'll put the backboards underneath them. And then after we've put on the Lucas device. Turn it on. And then this will push that all the way down to the chest, and that just calibrates for the compressions. And once that suction cup is calibrated, it'll provide adequate depth and recoil to give optimal compression during CPR. And the two conscientious citizens, two Lucas devices, if they're too small or too big. So if they're too small, like our medic in here, you won't get adequate depth, and suction cup won't reach. And if the patient is too big, if they have a barreled chest, the Lucas will actually start sliding, and it will perform quality compression back. So as you mentioned, the biggest thing, to do that manually, is very hard to do. This not only allows others firefighters to be freed up to perform other interventions that are needed on scene, but it also takes that exhaustion out of the factor. And the compressions are the most important aspect of it. So consistent, good compressions is gonna give us the best possible outcome.
So the main gist of the presentations and the thermal imaging camera, and if Captain Metish, if you want to maybe just pass it around the room there, is when the county commissioners in Adams County approved these, just wanted to give you an idea of how we use these funds during the pandemic and even before and beyond. These equipment and firefighter equipment. Firefighter, I'll give a little quiz, see if you know. How many jobs do you think a firefighter does? It's up to 52 now. So 52 different jobs a firefighter does as they go out. So to have specialized equipment during this is key. So I want to thank the Commissioners in Adams County for giving us this CARES Act funding. It really went to good use. We plan on, we do now have a Lucas device on every one of our first responding apparatus now.
Great, thank you so much.
Absolutely, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it. We appreciate all the work you all do.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, yes.
All righty. It's good to see you all, too.
Yeah, it is. It's nice to be in person. Yeah, definitely.
All right, thank you.
And from a child who saw her dad have two heart attacks as a young child, I really appreciate that, so I know what it takes. So thank you for everything you do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, Erica.
Matt Sutherd.
Matt?
So totally as a side note, I adopted my stepson two weeks ago, so it's pretty sweet that you guys honor that, so I appreciate that. He's a good kid, so I got two kids now, and they drive me a little crazy, but whatever, I like it. Anyway, so I missed a handful of weeks, and the last time I was here, since I've been here, there was a girl that did cartwheel, I think, in front of you guys. You were called handsome, apparently, and.
You haven't lived it down, just saying.
I know, I just decided to reunite it just for you guys for the rest of the week. And then you guys also left TCHD, right? So what I also want to do, well, not leave, but you know what I mean, like, type of thing. So what I want to do is kind of talk about maybe a little bit ideas on moving forward. So from a call that was received on August 15th, Jennifer Lugwood said that "We received hundreds of emails coming on Friday afternoon. Most of them are listed, have all of you listed. I'm trying to get through some of them and forward the rest to the call center to be documented in the best way. You do not need to send them to the call center, just move them from your inbox, but don't delete. Lisa, the first thing in the morning, can you please get through the rest of my email box and send them to the call center?" So, let me go back to the other page, blah, blah, blah. So I kind of take that as our communications are not being taken seriously or wanted to be engaged with in different discussions, right? So like, I don't agree with Emma on some of the stuff, but we did have a communication back a couple months ago, and I do appreciate that, right? And so, but moving forward, I would like to have, to see a more robust communication system for our community, especially with the people that you might not actually agree with. Because on the website on Adams County, one of the values is transparency, which also means that we are, which the definition underneath it is that we are committed to engaging in open and honest and respectful practices in communication. And as of today, a lot of the parents that you see week over week that might not agree with you, the reason why we are so-called kind of bullies, right? You kind of called us, I don't know if you were calling me specifically, but some of us that don't agree with you, is that we're not getting communication back to help either tell us what we should think or how we should do things, or there's no communication back to us. And so when we go to TCHD and we keep on communicating with them, and they don't respond back, we just kind of get, like, antsy, for lack of a better word. So, moving forward, my recommendation is to have a more robust communication system back to the people that don't agree with us. Because we are, this country is the way we are is because we are allowed to have different viewpoints that we can kind of climb the ladder and grow, so to speak. And so moving forward, I would like you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, I'm under three minutes for like the first time.
I am proud of you. Good job. Okay.
That was everyone on the list.
Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to come down and speak? No? Anybody else? Okay. If you could come down and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Mills. So Lynn Baca, the last time I was here, you stated you are not mandating vaccines, but you are threatening your employees' livelihood and forcing testing on them and taking their body autonomy away from them. I have had multiple employees of the county reach out to me and tell me thank you for supporting them and speaking for them. So I'm curious, how much money and kickbacks are you guys getting for subjecting them to these tests? I know the school districts are getting $2.50 per test that they're subjecting on the students, and they have even stated that it's such a great fundraiser. But my concern is, what is on the swabs? What chemicals are they injecting in these children, and you're injecting on your employees? And what are gonna be the long-term consequences from those chemicals? I mean, really, what are they? We don't know. And you guys are the county leaders, correct? A good leader does not ask things of others they are not willing to do themselves. And since the data shows that vaccinated people can still get and pass COVID, and since you guys are vaccinated, as leaders, you should still be doing the testing with your staff, because you can still pass it, and as a leader, you should do what you're mandating them to do. So you should be testing weekly as well. And that is what I have to say to you guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward? Okay, I don't see anyone else. We'll go ahead on with the communications from the Commissioners. Commissioners, do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Pinter.
Hey, so Kathy Mills, the last speaker, brought up something that I love to remind all of you. I'm a parent of elementary school-aged children, and the governor in Colorado recently worked with our health department and the federal government to make testing at home available and free to parents of school-aged children who are going in person. Just signed up for it myself. You can find the information on the Colorado government website, and if you just search for "Colorado vaccines, school-aged children, and parents", you can sign up for it. Just got my email confirmation. The paperwork is really easy to fill out. Previously, I was buying rapid tests to have in my home for the opportunities to do testing when we had an exposure in the family, and I'm really grateful to the governor of Colorado to making these tests free and available to parents who have school-aged children. And if you are looking for vaccinations for your children, Children's Hospital is running a lot of them, Kaiser Family Foundation, and many pediatricians' offices. I was able to get a walk-up appointment with my youngest child at Children's Hospital over the weekend. I highly recommended. The children's staff explained everything and answered all of our questions, and were really gracious and kind, and I'm grateful for everyone stepping up to provide both the testing materials as well as the vaccines to our community. And then I know that this particular vaccine does only go down to five, and I've heard from parents of smaller children that they can't wait for more data to be revealed for all age brackets. But right now, there's a lot of opportunity. The Colorado COVID website has a lot of information, both the free at-home testing as well as how to get vaccinated.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone else? All right, I don't see anything else. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, which is really short today?
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Yes, a second. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, did everybody vote? There it goes. All right. Thank you. Next is new business, county manager. What do you have for us?
Bear with me, Commissioners. I have a sinus infection. The first item before you is actually the first reading of our 2022 Adams County Proposed Budget, and I'm gonna ask our budget and finance director, Nancy Duncan, to come up. But before she does that, I'd like to read a few things about next year's proposed budget. As we present the 2022 proposed budget for your consideration, I continue to be amazed by the incredible response to the COVID-19 pandemic. In the past 18 months, county staff and the Commissioners have provided incredible leadership and resources to our residents and business community. The resiliency of our employees and community members have been remarkable. And this, of course, includes our budget staff, who manage CARES Act funding, ARPA funding, and other pandemic-related financial oversight, in addition to their exceptional work on the county's annual budget. The information provided in the following presentation will outline my recommended funding proposal and initiatives being requested in 2022. The budget recommendation was built with the Board of County Commissioners strategic goals in mind. Those strategic goals focused on education and economic vitality, creating a high-performing, fiscally sustainable government, improving the overall quality of life of our residents, maintaining a safe and reliable infrastructure system, and community enrichment. The financial and operational strength of the organization was a primary consideration when evaluated the operating and capital requests presented to me for this coming year. This budget also addresses some key focus areas, and Nancy will go through some of those key focus areas. But finally, I would like to thank each of the elected officials, the department directors, and the county budget staff for their cooperation and strategic vision that they have brought forth with the requests for this year. I also would like to thank the Commissioners for your guidance in outlining your goals and objectives for this coming year, especially as staff work to prepare a budget that I believe meets those objectives and the needs of our organization at this time. Leading up to the adoption of the budget next week, there will be continued dialogue as we refine projections and continually assess operational and capital needs for the coming year. At this time, I'd like Nancy to come up and present the 2022 preliminary budget.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Nancy Duncan, budget and finance director here at Adams County. I'm here today to present the 2022 Adams County Manager's Recommended Budget. This is the first reading to allow resident comment before adoption next Tuesday, November 16th. In accordance with state statute, notice of this public hearing was posted in the Northland Sentinel and Westminster Window on Thursday, November 4th. The 2022 Adams County Proposed revenues are $633,815,737. This is an increase of 11.4% from the 2021 adopted revenues. This increase is largely attributed to a 10.5% increase in property taxes and an expected increase of 18.6% in sales tax. Although some revenues are expected to decrease, other areas are expected to maintain or even increase a small percentage. Building permits are expected to see an increase of 4.5% and have already outperformed the 2021 budgeted amount. Highway users' tax is expected to increase by 1%. 2022 county-wide proposed operating expenditures are $565,982,531. This includes an increase of 8.2% over the 2021 adopted operating expenditures and includes 40 new positions recommended by the county manager. This also includes increases to mental health services at the detention center and increases to services for our homeless population. There was also an increase in maintenance contracts related to janitorial services and some rental agreements. What's important to note on this slide is that the county-wide proposed revenues exceed the proposed operating expenditures. This is also true for the general fund and shows that Adams County is not using any fund balance to support day-to-day operations. This slide shows the use of fund balance for all funds and also the general fund. For all funds, we are proposing a use of fund balance of $25.4 million. CIP and one-time maintenance projects are $93.2 million. In the general fund, Adams County shows a use of fund balance of $16.9 million, with CIP and one-time maintenance projects totaling $21.6 million. Including the CIP for 2022 is the Veterans Memorial, continuation of the Fleet and Public Works Building, and design for a barn at Riverdale Animal Shelter. This graph is important to show that we are not using any fund balance for daily operations. We are using fund balance for only capital and one-time maintenance projects. This follows the fund balance policy established by the Board of County Commissioners. Today is the first reading of the 2022 proposed budget. The proposed budget will be available online at adco.gov.org after this public hearing. On November 16th, there will be a second reading of the 2022 proposed budget. At that time, there will be resolutions for adoption of the 2022 budget. At that time, there will be resolutions for adoption of the 2022 budget and a resolution to certify the Adams County mill levy. Do you have any questions this morning?
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Odoricea.
I just want to thank you for all your work on this. I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and all of staff for working together on these issues. In particular, I note that we are leaning in on some of the most pressing issues of the day, whether that's mental health or helping folks who are experiencing homelessness to public safety, and that's what this group does. So I want to thank everyone who's been involved. It's not easy figuring out where to put limited resources in a time where there are so many people who need it. But your ability to facilitate the process and do it in a way with integrity and doing it with competence has helped us make sure that we can reach these issues, address these issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners?
I want to say I appreciate all the work that you do. You know, balancing our budget is amazing work. Unlike the state or unlike the federal government, we have to balance our budget yearly. So thank you so much and your team for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
And bringing it forward and explaining it, you know, in layman's terms, which I really appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Okay, and we don't vote on this if I remember right. Yep, okay, great. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the commissioners, the elected officials, the county manager. This is a hard one for me. The county manager and the executive leadership team, the department directors, and also the budget team, which consists of Mark Osborne, Nikki Blair, Mark Kluth, Timna Jedlow, Pernell Olson, and Stacy Snyder. This process would not be possible without the collaboration between all these groups. So thank you very much.
Especially our elected officials. Yes, thank you so much. All right, county manager, anything else for us?
Yes.
Sorry, it's me too.
Yes. The next item is a resolution approving Amendment 1 in the amount of $680,000 to the agreement between Adams County and North Metro Community Services, Inc., to provide additional services for residents with development disabilities. Nancy Duncan will be presenting this item.
For 2021, the .257 mill levy is projected to generate $2.1 million as available for developmentally disabled services. Of that amount, the county budgeted $1.6 million from that fund to be utilized for the benefit of persons with developmental disabilities who reside in Adams County. On March 16th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved an agreement with North Metro Community Services to provide services with, for, I'm sorry, to provide additional services in the amount of $680,000 due to the pandemic. That was approved in studies, or on the Fifth Amendment in public hearing. It's recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approves Amendment 1 to the agreement with North Metro Community Services to provide services and support for Adams County residents with developmentally disabilities in the amount of $680,000.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is one of those feel-good things, so yes. Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, county manager, anything else?
No other new business. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead, and we're going into our land use. We'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at about 10:30.
Chair, did I see an email about an executive session? Do you need anything from us? No? Must be behind in my email. Cool, thank you.
Obviously, no, nothing. Okay, thank you. Sorry, the other one's not here. Don't have a jazz in my box. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with land use, if you want to go ahead and get started.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Leila Vajlan. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you this morning is PLN 2021-12, and this is the 2021 code amendments, Phase 3. So this is a request for text amendments to modify the Adams County development standards and regulations. And the proposed text amendments we'll be discussing today include safe parking, tiny home villages, the creation of a mixed-use zone district, and then compliance with the comprehensive plan. So just to provide a little bit of background on how we got here, so Adams County regularly performs annual updates of its development standards and regulations. In May of 2021, staff received direction from the Board of County Commissioners to pursue text amendments for outdoor storage, zoning overlays, safe parking, tiny home villages, mixed-use zone district, and then adding in compliance with the comprehensive plan as a criteria of approval for many of our land use cases. And then in June and July, staff held several public and stakeholder meetings virtually through Zoom. And then in August, the new language was drafted and placed on the website. And then September, our public comment period began. And this, there are several phases of code amendments that have went in 2021. And just a reminder, so Phase 1 was the oil and gas updates. And then Phase 2 was the park zone district updates. Phase 3 is the subject application. And then Phase 4 is the sign code updates. So there are some text amendments that will be heard at another date. So at a study session with the Board of County Commissioners on August 12th and October 19th, or October 12th and October 19th, staff received direction to remove the zoning overlays, which include the Welby Subarea Plan, the Federal Boulevard Framework Plan, the TOD, and rail station area planning guidelines, to remove updates to the permitted outdoor storage allowances in I-2 and I-3, and to remove the proposed new definition for outdoor storage and the new fleet definition. This allows staff time to work with the affected property owners and businesses and to prioritize the overlays, and then define specific goals for each station or subarea. So throughout this process, staff has done several meetings for public outreach. We did targeted public outreach meetings. So typically, we do not send requests or public notice for code amendments. However, because we did have the overlays in there, we did send 15,000 mailings to all property owners and residents to everyone within our proposed overlays. And that includes the Welby Subarea Plan, the Federal Boulevard Framework Plan, and then the TOD, which is the half-mile buffer from all six stations. And then we held an industrial business and stakeholder meeting. So we had one-hour meetings with each one of these groups on two separate nights. So the first public outreach meeting was held on June 22nd, and then the second public outreach meeting was held on July 27th. We also held two countywide public outreach meetings. We also held two countywide public outreach meetings, the first being July 29th and the second being October 12th. So in addition to all the mailings, all meetings were advertised on the Regulation Amendments website, all social media accounts, including Nextdoor, and in the county newsletters. We also had several meetings for stakeholder outreach throughout this process as well. We had several separate meetings with our community safety and well-being team, our sheriff's office in code compliance. We had a meeting with all the Adams County school districts, with our chief building official, with the public health policy and program specialists within CEDD, and then several local nonprofits that are listed on the screen. So to start off, we made amendments to Chapter 2, 3, 4, and 11. Chapter 2 is our Application and Permitting Procedures chapter. And we are tabling the compliance with the comprehensive plan and subarea plans. And Ms. Fitch will discuss more at the Planning Commission update. And then moving on to Chapter 3, we added in the table of permitted uses. We have a new use of safe parking and a new use of tiny home villages. These amendments were pursued because safe parking in tiny home villages better serve some of the county's most vulnerable residents. And mixed use is encouraged in many of our adopted long-range plans. And this creation of a zone district will allow for a more permanent path forward for individuals that are pursuing mixed use in the county, as currently you can only do mixed use developments within a PUD or through a conditional use permit in our C-5 Zone District. So for the mixed-use zone districts, we added in residential and commercial for the use charts. And the commercial uses that we are allowing in mixed use include neighborhood indoor commercial, places of worship with a conditional use permit, government offices, animal hospitals, commercial retail, indoor commercial recreation and entertainment, restaurants, services, and trade schools. And then we also removed the conditional use permit allowance for mixed use in the commercial 5-zone district. For the performance standards for mixed use, we are proposing that there be no minimum lot size. However, there be a minimum lot width of 75 feet. For density, we're proposing a minimum of 10 dwelling units per acre, with the maximum being 35 dwelling units per acre. And then FAR standards, so the floor area ratio, is .75. And for height, we're proposing that principal structures be a maximum of 60 feet, with accessory structures being 16 feet. And then for required setbacks, we're proposing that the front side corner be a minimum of 5 feet, with a maximum of 20 unless it's along a state highway. Then the maximum would be 25 feet. And then for the side and rear setbacks, we're proposing 5 feet. And then 20 feet if it's adjacent to R1C or R2 zone properties. That's a single-family and duplex zone districts within Adams County. And then we're also proposing some height-related setbacks as well. So upper stories above 35 feet in height shall be stepped down from its highest roof line at least one full story for a depth of at least 15 feet where adjacent to properties zoned R1C or R2. And upper stories above 51 feet in height shall be stepped down from its highest roof line at least one full story for a depth of 25 feet where adjacent to properties zoned R1C or R2. And then the minimum floor area for dwellings within the mixed-use zone district, we're proposing that it match the residential 4-zone district. So an efficiency unit would be 450 square feet. The one-bedroom would be 600 square feet, the two-bedroom 750, the three-bedroom 900 square feet, and then the four-bedroom would be 1,000 square feet. We're also requiring that any properties that are rezoned to mixed use front on a state highway, arterial, or a collector road. And then we're also requiring that a site plan and architectural concept level drawings be approved with the rezone application. So the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners can see what the proposed development would be like at the time of the rezone application. So moving on to Chapter 4, we added in performance standards to allow for safe parking sites in tiny home villages. We added safe parking as an accessory use to commercial and institutional uses. And then we included tiny home villages in the institutional use performance standards. We also revised language within the mixed-use performance standards to reflect the zone district requirements and remove the conditional use permit for C-5. So for safe parking sites, we are proposing that they be approved through an administrative review permit. This is reviewed by staff and either approved or denied by the Director of Community and Economic Development. This would not go into any public hearings, but we would establish a one-year expiration date. And there would be public notification to all adjacent property owners, and an inspection would be required prior to approval by staff. This would be an accessory use to existing commercial or institutional uses in any zone district. We are requiring that a responsible agent be named at the time of application. So the address, name, and phone number of this responsible agent must be posted in a visible location on-site at all times. And they must be able to respond to any complaints within one hour. And then per a study session with the Board of County Commissioners, you requested that the code compliance information be added to this posting as well. So we included that as a requirement. And then for submittal requirements, we're requiring an operations plan that includes measures for security and services to the residents. We're requiring a trash disposal and collections plan to ensure there's enough receptacles for the individuals using the site and that trash is moving off the site as well. And we're also requiring a plan for water and sanitation that would be approved by Tri-County Health Department. And this can include things such as water bottles and then portable westerns. And then we did add in language that the Director of Community and Economic Development shall have the ability to approve or deny an administrative review permit based on the information provided within the operations plan if it does not adequately address concerns on security or services to the residents. And performance standards, we're proposing that a minimum of 25% of the existing parking area or five spaces, whichever is less, be provided for safe parking. So the minimum to establish a safe parking site would be the availability of five spaces. And we're requiring a minimum of one space between vehicles to allow for some privacy for the individuals using the space. And then we're requiring that all vehicles must fit into parking stalls with no overhang to allow for emergency access to be clear at all times. And for setbacks, adjacent to residential, we're proposing 20 feet. And then to non-residential uses, we're proposing 5 feet. And we are also including hours of operation. We're proposing from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and quiet hours being from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So no generators would be allowed to be used at this time. All vehicles must have current registration. And parking is only allowed on approved parking spaces with improved surfaces. And then we added in language for screening requirements for trash and portable toilets if applicable. And then moving on to tiny home villages, we did add a purpose statement in there because we got direction from the Board of County Commissioners that this was a use intended for individuals who are experiencing homelessness or to provide for transitional housing options within the county. So this would not be an attainable housing option, per se. We are proposing that this be approved through a conditional use permit, and it be allowed in all zone districts. And a neighborhood meeting would be required with any application for a conditional use permit. Similar to the safe parking sites, we're requiring a responsible agent. And the address, name, and phone number of this individual will be posted on the site in a visible location at all times. And thus, they must be able to respond within one hour of any complaints. And we are also requiring that code compliance contact information be added to this posting as well. There is a common facility requirement within any tiny home village, and that includes shower and restroom facilities, a kitchen area, laundry facilities, and that there be a paved system of walkways from all the homes to this common area. And we did add in language that if shower and restroom facilities, kitchen areas, and laundry facilities are provided within each unit, the common area requirement can be waived by the Board of County Commissioners. And then for submittal requirements, very similar to the safe parking, we're requiring an operations plan that includes measures for security and services to the residents. We're requiring a trash disposal and collections plan to ensure there's enough receptacles for the individuals that are living on-site and that trash is moving off the site as well. And we're requiring a parking plan. So one space for every three homes and one space for every employee would be required. And all parking must show conformance with Section 4-14 for parking stall size and surface. And the Board of County Commissioners, the conditional use permit may increase or decrease the required parking based on the transportation needs of the residents, services that are provided to the residents, and then the proximity of the village to the RTD light rail stations or bus stops. And then we also added in language that the Board of County Commissioners shall have the ability to approve or deny a conditional use permit based on the information provided within the operations plan if it does not adequately address concerns on security or services to the residents. And for site standards, to establish a tiny home village, we're requiring that the minimum lot size be a half an acre. And there be a minimum of 10 homes to be called a village. So this is preventing people from putting one or two tiny homes and calling it a village. There are open space requirements, so 200 square feet per unit. And 60 square feet of this may be private. The minimum spacing between homes we're proposing is 10 feet. And we're requiring a type B buffer yard from any adjacent uses. So this is a 10-foot landscape buffer. And then we're also requiring additional setbacks. So because this is conditional in all zone districts, we do have our R1C and R2 zone district that allow for 5-foot setbacks. We are adding in this additional setback to establish a minimum of 10. So if it is in a zone district that has 5, 10 is the minimum now. We're also adding in language for screening requirements for trash and portable toilets if applicable, so they're not seen from the public at the right of way. The max fence height would be 42 inches within any tiny home village. And we did set a maximum of one cat or one dog per home. And then no outdoor storage would be allowed within any tiny home village. For the home standards themselves, we would be requiring a minimum size of 100 square feet with a maximum size of 400 square feet excluding any lofts. And the minimum ceiling height, we're proposing to be 6'8". And the building materials, heating and cooling equipment, and emergency escape and rescue openings in construction must meet the IRC as adopted by Adams County at the time. So moving on to Chapter 11, this is our definitions. We're proposing three new definitions, and they include safe parking site, tiny home, and tiny home village. So for safe parking site, we're proposing the definition of a location that provides individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness and living in their vehicle a dedicated safe place to park. For tiny home, we're proposing a tiny home is a permanent structure that is constructed on or off-site and placed on a foundation, as defined in the performance standards. For one or more persons year-round, living with a floor area between 100 and 400 square feet excluding any lofts. And then for tiny home village, it's a residential occupancy of multiple relocatable temporary buildings containing only sleeping units combined with one or more separate buildings containing eating, bathing, toilet, and gathering facilities for common use, all located on the same lot, and tendency is typically 30 days or longer. So again, public notice is not typically required with code amendments. When we did have the overlays in this round, we did send out notice to all property owners and residents within the overlay boundaries. So that was a total of 15,000 notifications, and we received 54 comments back. Only two of these comments are relevant to the subject amendments. So for public comment related to this case, we received one comment in opposition to the safe parking regulations and tiny home village regulations, stating concern that it may actually increase the individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. And we also received one comment in support of the mixed use. However, they cited concerns for the mixed use potential in South Welby due to the roadway classification requirement. And then the 52 comments that we received that are not applicable to these amendments that are proposed today include three that were in support of the proposed outdoor storage regulations and overlays. And then we received seven comments that were neither in support or opposition. And then 42 of these comments were in opposition to the outdoor storage regulations or overlays or were requesting additional time before hearings. And we did receive two public comments since we submitted the Board of County Commissioners packet. One of these comments was in support of the overlays and expressed interest in helping the county move forward to establish that vision. And then the second public comment had some concerns with the setbacks in the mixed-use zone district. So we only are requiring additional setbacks if it's adjacent to R1C or R2 zoning. This specific comment does pull out A-1 because that is a single-family residential zone district as well, in expressing a concern for there not being additional setbacks when adjacent to A-1 zoning. So we also notified all of our referral agencies throughout this process as well, and that was 338 notifications that were sent. No concerns were identified. And of the comments that were received backed, Arapahoe County Planning noted that they're pursuing similar regulations and they intend to use some of the Adams County language when modifying their code. And Tri-County Health Department commended the county on regulations related to tiny home villages and safe parking. And they suggested language on heating and cooling equipment to prevent health hazards. And we did add in language into the tiny home villages to ensure that any heating and cooling equipment within the tiny homes meets the IRC standards. So this case was heard at the Planning Commission October 28th. The Planning Commission recommended approval 5 to 0 with three findings of fact and one condition. There were two members of the public that spoke in regards to this case. The first one was thanking the county for postponing the overlays in outdoor storage. And then the second comment was in opposition to requiring compliance with the comprehensive plan and applicable subarea plans. And the Planning Commission had several comments. Some were typographical errors. There was a comment on why didn't we set breed, size, and weight restrictions for dogs and cats in tiny home villages? They asked about the definition of quiet hours for safe parking sites, which individual zone districts do set operational standards in noise levels. And then they had questions in regards as why bowling alleys were allowed as a commercial use in the mixed-use zone district. All of the commercial uses were approved as performance standards when the mixed use was allowed in C-5 with a conditional use permit.
And a quick update from the comments received at the Planning Commission. The county attorney's office has reviewed the public comments, including comments provided by counsel for IPAC at the Planning Commission related to these amendments, are related to specifically the amendments that we've entitled "Empowering the Comprehensive Plan" in Chapter 2. At this time, the county attorney's office is recommending that amendments related to empowering the comprehensive plan be delayed until the adoption of the 2022 Advancing Adams Plan.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Otter, is you up? Questions for the staff?
Yes. And I would ask that, I'm going to have some questions here. And I would only ask that, we clarify and ask for my colleagues that, you know, we have former city council members from Brighton, Westminster, and Thornton here. And remember that these regulations that we're doing only apply to unincorporated Adams County. And so when I bring up some questions, I wanted to have some grace here to think about what would the folks in those communities think about with some of the details I'm asking, because generally, I'm supportive of everything that we're proposing here. I'm concerned a little bit about some of the discussion of the safe parking because when we talked about this at the study session, we specifically said there would be somebody on-site all the time, not just within an hour's notice. And I remember that because it was something that allowed me to say I supported that. I'm very concerned that we also, we say that this is for institutional and commercial accessory use, but if you look on the chart, it says it's an accessory use in absolutely every zone district. And that means that we can have people in every zone district. So I need to clarify that. So that's the second issue. And then, I mean, we're worried about setbacks for mixed use, but we're only putting 20 feet in or, you know, somebody's And then, I mean, we're worried about setbacks for mixed use, but we're only putting twenty feet for inner, you know, somebody's near residential homes, and that's, that causes me some concern. The things that I appreciate is the hours of operation, the requirement that all the vehicles are operational, and, but it doesn't clarify that they have to leave in the morning. It doesn't state that in the regs. And I thought that was one of the requirements, is that they have to clear out each day. I also was concerned that, mostly that one-hour response time. The quiet times, I didn't think that the quiet times, I thought that just meant like totally quiet. If you have generators running until ten o'clock and it's twenty feet from people's homes, people are gonna have a problem with that in residential neighborhoods, and I want us to address that issue because I don't think that folks in any city or any residential neighborhood would, would wanna have generators running until ten o'clock. So the onsite monitoring, I'm concerned that the operation plan talks about health and safety of the residents that are staying there, but not talk about the impact to the nearby community. That is another thing that I specifically asked for to be addressed in order to support this, and I want to get to yes, so please help me, guys. Help me. And think about it from the standpoint of what would the folks in Thornton, Brighton, and Westminster say if they had basically the same sort of thing, twenty feet from their homes in a residential neighborhood? So help me get to yes, address some of these issues, and if not, I'm gonna ask that we split this up into different votes. Thank you.
And Paulo Diaz with Community Safety and Wellbeing can help answer some of the questions on safe parking and tiny home villages?
Thanks, Commissioners, for hearing that and for address, for sharing your concerns. I think one of the things that we had looked into when it came to onsite monitoring is due to some other practices from other safe parking locations throughout the metro area. A lot of them did have twenty-four hours, not twenty-four hour service, but they had staffing from the hours of operation. And what they have found is that it wasn't necessary, and a lot of them were pretty much left with nothing to do. And a lot of the security staff basically had to leave. So due to the practices that we had seen, it really was just a reach out when there's issues, and that has been kept to a minimum based off of the practices that we've seen in those metro area, others in the metro area. So that's why we had thought that the security plan in the operations plan was suitable as part of the review process.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, it doesn't address, safety and security addresses only what you've said in this regs, if you read the regs. Only talks about for the neighbor, not for the neighbors, but just for the residents that are staying there, and I appreciate that. But that, you kind of admitted we changed the goalposts on me since the study session, where we did say that we were gonna have twenty-four, that we were gonna have monitoring during the hours of operation. That's significant, especially for a new program that is not based on a public hearing. It's an administrative review, and it lasts one year. So if there's a problem, and we don't have some stuff in here in the regs that say that we need to protect the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, if we don't have something in here that states that there should be monitoring at all time, a neighborhood could have to deal with a challenge in their neighborhood for a long period of time without any sort of recourse. And this is why during the study session, I was concerned about the one year, I was concerned about the administrative review. I said, let's compromise and either do conditional use where we can talk about it and have conditions based on the concerns of that neighborhood. Or lower the timing, in case there is a problem, we have some, some recourse to address the issue. And I don't feel like we have that. So it's not your fault, Paulo, but I am gonna say to my colleagues, this is, these are some changes that were made since we did the study session, and you guys got me on board with some of those things, and now we're changing them, and so I'm concerned. And, and then what about the other issue, accessory use everywhere?
I might turn that to my colleagues real quick right over here.
Yeah, so we are allowed it as an accessory use to existing commercial and institutional uses that are established onsite. Because a lot of institutional uses and commercial uses are allowed in many zone districts, we didn't wanna set a zone district standard because it's allowed in many zone districts, the commercial and institutional uses.
Madam Chair?
If I might, that means somebody with a home-based business in a residential neighborhood could now have people living in their driveway. And that's one of the complaints that we get. That's what I'm concerned about, is some of those things. I'm concerned about somebody who's got a residential estate, who now allows people to come and live in their, on their property in the middle of a neighborhood, simply because they have some sort of commercial institutional use. So I'm concerned about how this could be misused, and I'd rather have it limited to commercial and industrial zone properties.
So, so to clarify, we certainly expect that the majority of applications or a large number of applications will come from, from churches, which are allowed in residential zone districts, thus the reason, right, to make it accessory to the use, not to the zone district. So it could not be an accessory used to a residence, to a home. It could, however, be an accessory used to a church located in a residential zone district. So just to clarify.
And can I add also that they have a right to practice their religion, so it doesn't matter if we regulate it or not. They're allowed to have safe parking in their parking lots. So we can either put in regulations now, so they have something to follow, or it could just go like, you know, be all wild.
I appreciate the distinction. What other institutional uses could be done in a residential neighborhood other than churches?
Schools as well, and I'm gonna ask our, our staff planner if there's any others that I'm not thinking of.
You know, that's actually kind of interesting. I think one of the things that I, I happen to run into, Dr. Michelle Haney from Red Rocks Community College, and she talked about students attending community college and that many of them are experiencing homelessness and trying to attend community college while homeless and make their lives better, and some of them caring for younger siblings or other family members. And while it's not necessarily part of this particular amendment, text amendment, there are many instances, community colleges, other schools, where folks are experiencing homelessness and just need a safe place to be. So when you, when you talk about that, that churches and schools are most likely users of this, and they are also most likely to be in residential areas. I thank you for framing it so well, Commissioner Henry, around providing guidelines as opposed to just allowing people to make it up as they go along.
I appreciate the schools and the churches piece, and I appreciate you guys clarifying that. It, just some guardrails around it, I think helps, so people aren't having, living in regular neighborhoods with residential, they have a home-based business, and they turn it now into something that's different.
And, and Commissioner, we have a few points of clarification to, to questions you had raised. So regarding the quiet hours, it is defined in there that the hours of ten to, ten PM to seven AM cannot include the use of generators. So that is, is covered in there. We certainly can add language to be very specific, that when we talk about the hours of operation, that means when not in operation, that those vehicles must leave. Those are, those are easy edits for us to make. I think to the, to the point of it being administrative review, we, we are, of course, requiring the neighborhood meeting. I certainly then have, at my discretion, in the capacity of being Director of Community and Economic Development, the ability, if there is strong neighborhood opposition, to deny the permit on, on specific grounds if they haven't satisfied mitigating measures for the neighbors. So, so we do have the ability to say no if we don't think things have been addressed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would the, would the board feel comfortable adding some language to the neighborhood plan that says to address impacts to surrounding parcels and property owners and residents? And that you can add conditions and make modifications based on those impacts?
Okay, Commissioners? Are you comfortable with that? Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, I don't, um, and maybe my colleagues understand it better, but Commissioner Oderesio, I need you to tell me more about the changes that you want to make and what you're, what you're parsing out. So I just need a little more information, or maybe one of my colleagues understands it better. I'll just ask, Commissioner Oderesio, could you explain it to me better?
I'd like to add in the operations plan, some language that specifically calls out in addition to addressing the health and safety of the folks that are staying at the facility, that they're also gonna address the impacts to the surrounding parcels. And that the specifically, that the director can add additional conditions to address those and make modifications throughout and not have to wait until the end of the year to make modifications if things arise.
So I, I guess I, I guess I, what I don't understand is all neighbors have impacts on each other. My neighbor has a party with a bounce house and thirty children running in the backyard, does impact my Saturday. You know, I'm cool with it, I'm gonna give them some grace, you know, like let them have their party. I guess I don't understand what impacts you are trying to correct for that aren't articulated in these guidelines.
Madam Chair? I, it's because, I mean, we're dealing with this issue in unincorporated Adams County where I live, and in those neighborhoods that are living next to some of the sanctioned and unsanctioned encampments about people going through their trash, people going through their yards, concern about some of the noise with the assembly of folks at night and during the day. There have been increases in crime near some of those other encampments. I'm thinking this will help us reduce that. So those are the impacts that address, that need to be addressed. And, and really, if you talk to the folks that are living in those communities that are impacted right now, those are the impacts that we need to address. I'm talking about let the director address those issues as they either are reasonably foreseen based on the impact from the neighborhood meeting, to address the concerns of the community and to address additional conditions if necessary along the way. And to be able to say that we can, that you're asking for some flexibility, and I'm saying, that's fine, let's give it to the director to have the discretion to address those issues. Because we are dealing with these issues in this neighborhood, these neighborhoods right now.
Commissioner Bakker?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff, for your presentation. So I agree with, I see two items that Commissioner Oderesio is trying to address, and one of them is impacts on the community, and he's absolutely correct. Because what we heard at our open house, and I, I apologize, I can't recall the neighborhood that we met in, it's, it was exactly that, is individuals that were sleeping in stoops at residential homes, they were going through trash in the neighborhood. I mean, those are real concerns for, for neighbors. So I agree with that. I think that there is an impact by allowing this, but I think we also wanna be flexible and allow for this because I think it is certainly a need in our community, and I think that it's already happening informally, is that people are already... I left, you know, I had an event Saturday night, I think it was Saturday night, at the Westminster Weston, and when I walked out to the parking lot, there are people staying in their cars in the parking lot. I mean, I don't know if they're, you know, just passing, or they're there for a while or a few hours. But I think that this is occurring all over. It's just, it's just become very difficult for our neighbors and our residents to afford housing, stable housing right now. So I do agree with that. So I think that we do need to address the impacts on the surrounding parcels and the neighbors, but I don't know what that looks like right now, and I don't know if this is the forum that we want to have this dialogue, so I'm looking for some direction from the county manager here in just a moment and/or the county attorney. So as far as the director can add additional modifications, so if this is an administrative process, I think that we need to give direction to staff, and again, this is not me, county manager. We wanna give enough direction to the staff because that would put a lot of undue pressure, in my opinion, on a director. They need to have some parameters in order what to work in. We can't, it, it, you know, I think that's what is of concern to some of our industrial and commercial users, is that it would not be... I'm trying, I'm searching for the word here. It would be subjective to the individual sitting in the position and not necessarily to a written regulation. Does that make sense? Is that correct? So can you, can you help me out, county manager, as far as the dialogue and how to continue this? Because I don't know the answers right off the top of my head on, on what impacts to communities would look like.
I'm gonna have Heidi.
Sure. She's not feeling the best this morning.
I know, I can see it in your eyes, even though you have a mask on.
So, I mean, I think you've got a couple options. If you would really like to dive in more and have additional proposals and consider it more in-depth, you could obviously postpone a vote on this and come back. If you make substantive changes, you, we would need to go back to the Planning Commission again before we could move forward. Minor changes, I think that are consistent with what has been proposed, we could make today on the record, and then give staff direction to make those changes before adoption. So you, you have a few options. I, I think, I'm not sure, Commissioner Bakker, I think you made a good point about giving broad discretion to your, to your director. I think the way it's written now, the director has discretion to issue the permits, but within the criteria established. So I, you know, to your point, I do think if you added a category that says, or anything else, it does make it pretty broad for the director.
Set, clarify, Commissioner Bakker? Okay. I'm gonna speak, and then Commissioner Pinter, and then Commissioner Oderesio. Basically, you know, we have a year permit, so if there's a lot of issues, a lot of complaints, then we just don't reissue the permit, is what I'm looking at. I have no desire whatsoever to postpone this. I have no desire to expand what we've already seen here. I think we should give it a year and see how it goes. I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal. We've had other communities in the metro area that have already done this and are doing this. And I think that our staff has actually talked to them, and they're taking lessons learned from that, from those communities. And the experiences those communities have had and have implemented them into our regulations here that they have set up. So I'm fine with the way things are in this. So I personally have no desire to, to change anything and give it a year and see how it works. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, I actually also agree with the one-year permit timeframe for similar reasons to, as Commissioner Henry has laid out. Also, I, I also have no desire to postpone, I think particularly because we are heading into the winter season and that we need to have a plan. It is mostly our communities of faith who have taken this up, again, hearing from community. I heard from a pastor over at Brimfield United Methodist at the precious child event that was held at the Westminster Weston, that they do safe parking. And it's not, again, you know, like Red Rocks Community College is in Jeffco, Brimfield United Methodist is in a different county as well. But he talked about how it ended up being such a blessing for their community and how they were nervous. But they did it out of an act of faith to care for their neighbors, particularly during a trying time. And then he also explained, and I thought this was particularly touching, that a lot of people who were taking advantage of the safe parking were using that safe parking because they were nurses or health technicians or worked in an Amazon facility, and they felt they were exposed to COVID on the daily basis and had previously lived with elderly parents and did not want to expose their parents to COVID, so they preferred to sleep in a car rather than accidentally take COVID home. And this is something they implemented in twenty twenty when vaccines were not really available and masks were not available. So these folks were choosing to sleep in a car to protect their family members, and the church felt they had to go out of their way to provide safe options for them. It's really been quite a journey. I know the generator issue is really a sticky one, because if we don't have a source of heat and a source of power, especially in Colorado winters, we are looking at folks dying in their cars, which we don't want either. And I know our staff has struck a really delicate balance here on generator usage as well as power usage and spacing to make sure that people have a safe opportunity to exist. With regard to additional broad discretion for our director, I am sure we will hear from our director if six months from now this is not going well inside the one-year. I am sure we will hear from our staff and community if this is not going well. However, when I think about all the different factors that might cause a safe parking lot to not be a good neighbor, I think about things like noise, which are already addressed here and in detail. I think about things like my colleague brought up, sleeping on a stoop. Well, sleeping uninvited on somebody else's stoop is a crime. And if you have folks sleeping uninvited on somebody else's stoop, then we have a trespass issue, which is the whole reason we need a safe parking program to address those issues. which is the whole reason we need a safe parking program to address those issues. Again, going through personal property on someone else's property, such as going through trash in a trash can that's on somebody's property, these are all things that we have protocols addressing, whether it's the quiet hours or the laws that already exist. Otherwise, like without naming something that we are harmed, that we are seeking to prevent, I really feel it could just be, I don't like you. And I don't want us to be making decisions on land use based on, I don't like you. And I, I know that homelessness makes folks uncomfortable, either because they've experienced it themselves or they're afraid of experiencing it. But we need to find ways during this incredibly difficult economic time to give folks humane options to remain safe. And I believe these safe parking sites, especially with the one-year pilot, to be able to take in feedback, give us that avenue to explore a safe bridge opportunity to give folks opportunities to be safe.
Okay, I have Commissioner Odoricio and then Commissioner Baca.
Okay. So specifically, what I would like to see is in Section 10, that where we talk about operation plan, operations plan required, it says, "The Director of Community and Economic Development shall have the ability to approve or deny," and I'd like to say, "or modify." That's the only addition. And then the, except in that sentence and then at the very, actually at the end of that sentence, and then add, "or impacts to the surrounding parcels." And I think what that does is we're already delegating discretion to her to address security for the folks there, address services, which is pretty broad. I think to address surrounding parcels would be a real easy thing, and it would show our community that a minor modification here would still allow us to say that we're addressing potential concerns. Those are the two things I would like to add to that section. I would also like to add the onsite monitoring back, which is what we agreed to at the planning, at the study session. I'm concerned that that was changed and nobody notified me because I really want to get to yes on this issue. And I agree with that. I don't want to delay. I would like to have this thing implemented and approved today. And I'd like to get there. If you want me on board, I would love to be on board on this. I think those are some very minor things that I'm asking for in order for us to address some concerns. And I think it would show good faith to the surrounding communities, and I would ask each of you, what would you say to the folks at Brighton, Thornton, and Westminster? And it would be, yes, we're addressing any potential concerns by saying, if there's any impacts, we'll address them, and our director can. And so I'd ask that, and then the onsite monitoring. So those are the two big things that I'm asking for. And I would hope that we can, again, recognize that it's it's a big concern, particularly in the unincorporated neighborhoods already right now.
Commissioner Baca?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Odoricio, for your modifications. I agree with you on those. I agree with, you wanted to add some additional language to approve or deny the impacts of the surrounding parcels. So I agree with that. Regarding the onsite monitoring back, adding that language back in. You know, I grew up in unincorporated Adams County, and most of the area that I represent, although we are elected at large, I understand that, is in unincorporated Adams County. And I still have family that lives in unincorporated Adams County. So I just want to make a point that it is different when you live in the city limits. It's different because you can call up your local police department, and they are there, and they respond very quickly. I have to stand up for my unincorporated residents that once policy and code is provided, their recourse is that they have to go through code compliance, which never moves as fast as they want it to. I just have to put that out there. Whether it's partying in a VRB home, it is excessive traffic from short-term rentals, it's a problem. And I could tell you that problems are going on for 12 and 14 months at a time before we can make any sort of progress on improvements for our unincorporated residents. So I am willing to strike at a minimum the onsite monitoring. I would like to see that back in its entirety. And I know from the tours that we went on that as time goes on, as residents become more comfortable and more secure, that you take care of some of their basic needs. Sleep, food, shelter, warmth, that they can then move on, and then they start looking for employment. So I'm going to err on the side of caution that we either put onsite monitoring back in its entirety or we have to have, at a minimum, a minimum, a contact that if we have issues, we need a site contact that we need to be able to contact immediately at all times. And I'm going to say, start out with an onsite monitoring. This is something new for all of our residents in Adams County. I would rather go out, start a program that is just a little cautious while balancing the needs of residents that are needing shelter and doing that in a humane way. As far as generators, I mean, that came up. I think we need to monitor that. I mean, we'll see how it goes. But I agree with what is being proposed right now is that generators would not be in use. So thank you for that.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I would only ask that those two minor things, I am trying to show compromise in something that's reasonable, and I want to get to yes. And I want this implemented right away because I do want to see people. And I would love to see schools be able to accommodate the students. I appreciate Commissioner Pinter's. I would just ask that those two things be modified, just that the permit could be modified and that we add the impacts to surrounding parcels or communities some sort. And then that we add the onsite monitoring. And if it is what we kind of see as a one-year pilot, kind of, and if we find that there's no issues, maybe we remove that onsite monitoring next year.
Okay, does anyone have an opposition on those two minor changes? Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, just want to clarify with what the county attorney had previously said, and maybe I'm being redundant here, but these changes aren't sufficient enough to send this back through the process.
I don't believe so. I believe they're consistent with what's being proposed. They're just minor changes.
Okay, thank you for assuring me, yes, then I have no problem.
And I support this 100% right now with those changes.
Okay, are we getting those changes in there?
I do already have both changes drafted, and we can get them up on this site. I can read them out real quick to the group. So to Section 10, which is the operations plan, the second sentence will be altered to say, "The Director of Community and Economic Development shall have the ability to approve or deny an ARP permit based on the information provided in the operations plan if it does not address concerns on security or services to the residents and does not sufficiently mitigate impacts to surrounding neighbors and property owners based on the neighborhood meeting and site-specific review." The second one is going to be the responsible agent, which is going to be added back into Section 17. "The responsible agent shall appoint at least one staff member to be in attendance on the site during all operation, operating hours."
Anybody oppose that language?
Madam, I would just, Madam Chair, if I might, I would say that one staff member who does not, I wanted to make sure it could be a volunteer. I think that's fair, too. And I just want to have one, a person onsite doesn't necessarily have to be paid. But however that is, a staff member, paid or otherwise, or volunteer. I think we need to have. Exactly, we don't have that flexibility. Because there might be something where we all, you know, take a shift and say, I'll cover this night, and you cover, you know, and that's how we can make this thing work, particularly schools and churches. So I'm asking for more flexibility on that one particular piece. The one piece I want to make sure, in the change that you made earlier, was that they could approve or deny or modify an ARP. And it's not just based on upfront, but maybe along the way if there's issues that need to be addressed along the way. That's what I want to make sure is in there. Thank you.
I have made both of those changes. And for the responsible agent one, I have changed it to, "The responsible agent shall appoint one person to be in attendance." So we don't specifically say staff.
Any other thoughts or questions, commissioners? I don't see any. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve, but I'm waiting for the language.
Commissioner, Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
I just want to say for the record that this approval does not include the changes to Chapter 2 as informing the comprehensive plan or empowering the comprehensive plan.
So just to clarify, I think.
I'm confused.
I figured. I think what Christie was trying to say is that the adoption of these regulations today with the changes that are being discussed on the record would not include adoption of changes to enforcement of the comprehensive plan as it is our recommendation that we table those particular regulations until we have a better comprehensive plan to bring forward and enforce against.
And when will that be?
End of first quarter 2022. If not sooner.
Commissioner Odoricio?
The proposed change was to make it a requirement that the comprehensive plan be followed. And that would be currently the 2012 comprehensive plan and subplans that have happened between that time and now, I believe. I'm okay with tabling this, and hopefully when we have a new vision. But note that at any time, if there is something where you would think that that would be triggered, it's still a question of compatibility. And it's a now, if we just clarify, currently, it's not a requirement, but it's a factor to be considered in the findings of fact. Is that correct? And I knew this is a legal question. But consistency with the comprehensive plan, let me clarify this for the lawyers. Consistent with the comprehensive plan is a factor to be considered, but not necessarily a requirement. Is that true?
Lawyer speak.
Do you need, do you need some time?
No, no, no. I've been doing a lot of research on this for the last two weeks. So yes, consistency in the comprehensive plan is a factor, an advisory factor to be considered. However, the change that was making here would have been a legislative change. And at this time, our comprehensive plan is not sufficiently specific enough to make that into a legislative document. So that is why the county attorney's office is recommending we take that out.
And therefore, I'm just trying to make a record that I agree with the modification to, I mean, to remove it for now. And that, just for clarity for people in the community that are concerned that we are not upholding our comprehensive plan, that we are not trying to back our vision in these comp plans, that we can still make policies on a case-by-case basis as an advisory, but it's not dispositive.
Yeah, specifically to criteria of approval, I believe it's number two with a conditional use permit. It does empower the commission to take into account future land use as well as neighboring properties. So that could be used as an advisory document in that situation.
Thank you very much. So I agree with this modification for now.
Okay. This county man, our county attorney actually kindly reminded me that we still have public comment. So commissioners, do you have any other comments for our staff or direction? Okay. Erica, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in regards to this? Who want to come down and state your name?
Sorry, I saw someone coming out of the side.
Yeah, you're in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jessica Elizade with Fairfield and Woods on behalf of the Industrial Property Owners Consortium this morning. The consortium is a 501(c)(6) trade organization, fully formed, and it is comprised of 175 members who are property owners, industrial property owners in Adams County and growing. And we are here simply to say thank you very much. Thank you to the Adams County Commissioners. Thank you very much to staff, to legal staff, for being receptive about the concerns that the industrial property owners brought forward, for being thoughtful about your approach to that, and also to staff and to the legal staff as we continue to work through the details of coming forward with a stronger package that I think it will be more enforceable on behalf of the county as well. We continue to work every day with staff and want you to know that we're very receptive and have the same goals for Adams County moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? All right, I don't see anyone else. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Well, I tried to make a motion. I can try again, like unless we've missed something else.
Good luck. Hey, we have a motion on the table already.
Yes. I move to approve the proposed text amendments, PLN 2021-12, with three findings of fact and also one condition.
All right, and do I have a second?
A second amended, of course.
As amended, okay.
And I think this is clear, but just as amended verbally and as we've seen on the screen during the hearing this morning, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Yes, 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 everyone says yes.
Okay, motion has passed. And I believe there is nothing else on the agenda. So we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.